Welcome to another meeting of the Lorraine County Commissioners broadcast exclusively on your Lorraine County Community College Education Station. The Lorraine County Commissioners cordially invite you to see the meeting live and in person every Thursday morning. The meetings are located in the Lorraine County Administration Building located at 226 Middle Avenue in downtown Alaria. The meetings start at 9:30 a.m. on most weeks. Now, enjoy the meeting.
Well, with all due respect and I appreciate Shirley, she is not our legal counsel. Would you like to have a comment Shirley?
Yes, I would. Shirley Johnson Overland, and I don't have a legal opinion, and I hate to disagree with your representative from the prosecutor's office as the newspaper has. I think that there is some difficulty in difference of opinion regarding what the so-called administrative sessions are. They are not listed in the open meeting laws in any of the pages that I've seen. What they say is that any meeting other than a regular meeting is a special meeting. And there are such things as study meetings, I gather. And so, it seems when Mr. Innis suggests that you need to pass a resolution to regularize what you're going to do, I think that's a good idea. I'm not prepared to make any comments about whether there is such thing as administrative meeting or not. I haven't consulted my attorney about it. But, well, my organization's attorney. But, I think there is so much confusion about whether an administrative meeting actually exists and is legal, and the terms that you're discussing, and I think you need to question and look into further. I think it's an excellent idea that you're going to have whatever it is that you call it, a regular meeting of some nature, and that you open it to the public, and that you do allow some kind of comment or additional information if people that come to your meeting have any to offer. But, it's really, as I said several weeks ago when this whole thing came up, it's a very confusing area, and there are many different opinions on it, but I'm not, I think you're moving in the right direction, at least to make them public and with some possibility of public input.
I think Jerry has, thank you Shirley. Jerry, you have a comment?
Commissioner, I would just note that, you know, what I wrote in my opinion was probably eighty percent of it a summary of, I think, a dozen or more court cases. So, it was a summary of what the courts had said, and I welcome the Chronicle Telegram to have their expert who disagrees with me to send me a court decision that says something different. And I am more than open to looking at a court decision. But, what you have before you is what courts of law have said, not what I say, or the Chronicle Telegram, or some other lawyer out there. You have twelve to fourteen cases of what courts have ruled, and I am more than open to seeing another court decision that says something different than what I said.
And, thank you Jerry, and I'm not willing to meet twice a week in formal sessions like we did when I first came here in 1991. I think it's inefficient to have a clerk preparing for two meetings a week, and they're trying to get information ready for a meeting, and they're trying to type minutes from a meeting, and I think that that's very inefficient. So, I like the one official meeting per week. I like the concept of meeting on Tuesdays if there's any need for us to do that, to be advised of what's going on, and I will accept the concept that this should be done publicly. But, I'm not willing to have two official, regular meetings in one week. I think it's a waste of time.
Well, I support that. If that's what you made as a motion.
Well, I think it's basically the same thing as what we're discussing. The only thing is you're saying that you don't want to keep the minutes. But, it's basically the same thing.
No, it's not going to be formal like this, though. We're not going to sit up here.
No, I don't like sitting up here in the first place. I would rather be down there, but since we're up here.
Well, we're all in agreement. We need to, we're all in agreement, we're going to meet, we're all in agreement, it's going to be public. I don't think we need to do minutes. I mean, basically, I want to continue what we have been doing, as the prosecutors told us, and just open the doors. It takes the cloud of doubt out. We haven't kept minutes in the past, there's no need to do this, so. The agenda issue, we don't need to have an agenda, as long as Mr. Cordez in public session says, hey, I need to meet next Tuesday. Anybody would like to participate? This is what we're talking about. The Commissioners need to get information regarding this, this, and this. We have our meeting at 9:30, or he'll come up and say there won't be a meeting next Tuesday because no directors or anybody would like to talk to us. That's how I see it.
Are you saying that you're going to, we're scheduling the meetings now for Thursday unless we decide not to have one, and then Jim will announce?
Yeah, every Tuesday, 9:30, we're going to have, which is what we had in the past, not Thursday, but every Tuesday. It's just an informal meeting.
I understood that we weren't scheduling them, and that I was going to ask for them if you felt necessary.
No, no, I think what Jerry said was that we should pass a resolution so we don't have to advertise the paper for the meeting, just, is that right?
Schedule them every Tuesday.
Yeah, they're every Tuesday.
Schedule them that way.
From today on.
That way, there's no problem with somebody saying, "I didn't know about this."
Right, and then it's like we don't show up.
And if you just don't have them, you don't have them.
All right.
I don't like that aspect of it, but I will agree to it if that's what, that will avoid having unnecessary communication with the clerk and people who are calling, but there's going to be, I don't think we're going to be doing this every Tuesday.
No, I think, I can see us doing it twice a month, but what if something comes up? We need to meet before we have to vote next Thursday.
Well, do you want to just schedule them for twice a month? Try it like that? Because you're meeting already on Tuesday, the third Tuesday, so just schedule them twice a month. Just schedule one other meeting in there on a Tuesday.
How's that grab you Jim?
First and third? First Tuesday and the third Tuesday?
Whatever those are that the board are, I'm fine.
Let's try that. First and third.
Then if you need another one, you'll announce it at the Thursday.
Right, first and third.
Right, first and third.
I will be prepared.
Now, the third, we're going to have to keep minutes of at least the childcare.
That's already being done, though, correct?
Right, you go into, you go into formal session, then you come out of that formal session and go into administrative session. So, you do have to keep the childcare.
And the public will be allowed to speak.
Okay, let me, that's the prerogative of the board. Let me complicate the issue further.
Oh, please. We're so close.
The third Tuesday this month is Fair Week. Traditionally, this board hasn't met during Fair Week on those type of issues. So, we already have a scheduling conflict.
But, that's okay, when we have our meeting, you'll say that.
I will? Okay, yes, I will.
Are you saying it right now?
I'm saying yes, I am, thank you.
Every meeting, we talk about the fair.
So, we're not going to meet.
Well, we're promoting attendance at the fair.
We're not going to meet the third Tuesday, then, correct?
So, put the childcare payment on a Thursday, let's, because otherwise it slows the payments down, and we're going to have a lot of people that are happy.
Right, so we need to hold it a Thursday before, if we can, and we can't cancel the board meeting that Thursday because there's, I believe, there's an indication?
John Roca, he's having his budget hearing that day.
Budget hearings, okay. So, there will be a Thursday board meeting, but there'll be no administrative session that way.
Okay, so then the first time we're going to do this administrative meeting is the first Tuesday in September. What is that date, Roxanne? First Tuesday in September?
Well, actually, the first Tuesday in August is next week.
Oh.
Do you need to meet with us?
No, what is today?
No.
Oh.
Okay, there we go.
Labor Day is the third, the fourth is the first Tuesday in September.
We saw it, we saw it, right? I did say September, and Jim talked about August, but the first Tuesday is next week. You don't, you don't need a meeting next?
No, I don't desire a meeting this time.
So, then I will move that we start meeting on the first, no, we schedule administrative sessions for the first and third Tuesdays of the month, beginning September 4th.
And please include that the public will be allowed to speak.
At 9:30?
Yes, at 9:30, first and third Tuesdays.
Does that include that the public's going to be allowed to speak?
No, I didn't think that that needed to be part of the motion.
Well, I think, for future, we may not have the board to determine at that point in time if they wish to take input from the public.
Oh, wait a minute, the board's going to determine at that time? Yes, if there's somebody there and they want to speak, if the board wants to hear them, fine.
Can I ask another question, please? Since it's supposed to be an informational gathering meeting, and it's administrative meeting, it's formal, is, who's going to run the meeting?
The president of the board.
Okay. I'm just trying to cover all contingencies here, I'm not trying to be difficult.
Yeah, you are.
So, the president of the board will be responsible for the meeting then?
Correct.
Okay. I'm comfortable with that.
Oh, thanks.
Oh, I'm so glad.
Well, if you're going to have a book there, and you're going to have some discussion, you do have to have somebody that's going to be able to control the flow of the meeting. Normally, those things have been kind of ad hoc, so we'll be responsible as a president to at least preside over the meeting.
Right, and at that point, just like our meeting today, the president will say, "Is there any public input?", and just like that.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Yes, Elizabeth?
May I suggest in the matter of public discussion, Elizabeth Rumix, R-U-M-I-C-S, Overland, in the matter of public discussion, if there is public interruption in the course of the informational meetings, that the board consider itself able to rule out of order, and that most discussion, if, or comments, if any, might well come at the end of the meeting so as not to be too interruptive?
That's a good suggestion.
Is that a possible compromise?
I think we'll.
It's a work in progress.
We'll start out and see how it goes. If it needs fine tuning, we can do that. Okay?
Any more discussion?
Will you call the roll man?
Mrs. Blair? Aye. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye, but I want it recorded, that I want the public to speak, to be able to speak.
I think everybody knows they're going to.
Well, I kind of figure if a newspaper editor can have an opinion that's going to influence thousands of people and never come to a meeting, that the public should at least be allowed to speak at a meeting.
Correct, and I think they will.
Anything else, Commissioner Vancy?
That's it, thank you.
Commissioner Moore?
Yeah, I just don't mind anything on that one, so.
Oh, no, we have another issue here.
We don't want to talk about it again.
Let's get the minutes of the meeting ready for the next meeting. Today's meeting should be ready, minutes should be ready for next one.
You said you were.
Okay, go for it.
Oh, thanks.
Go for it.
Okay, first of all, on our, oh boy, let me slow down here. On the agenda, I was working off an agenda that had nineteen issues on it that we were going to vote on today. This morning, I saw that we got one with twenty-six. None of the agendas are numbered. I was wondering if we could get these agendas numbered so that I know which one I'm working off of. Mr. Cordez, could you?
We had a brief discussion ad hoc coming into the meeting this morning. Madam Clerk, what I want you to do from now on is I want you to number the drafts. I, too, have had a problem with multiple drafts up there. I go in, I saw Miss Vancy earlier this week, and we were working off of two different documents, and we weren't aware that we were working off two different documents. If there's going to be multiple drafts, they need to be numbered, draft one, draft two, draft A, draft B.
And can I get the final draft or something? Or not even, or just the final?
Well, we won't know what the final draft.
I'll just say like this.
All right, when it's done, it's done. So, there isn't really no final draft. So, I think we just need to number, the agenda is the final draft, so it won't say draft on it, for clarification. So, will you start numbering the drafts? Because sometimes we don't get to them, and then we start working on it, and you get further through your mail, and you find a new one.
But, a lot of issues that might fix the minutes that we're having problems with is if our directors could start preparing the resolutions for us that they want, I mean, whether it's directors, or whether it's the departments that are requesting the funds, I think that was delaying our minutes, wouldn't you think, being prepared on a weekly basis? Because you have to.
That's one thing that delays the minutes also, is when we have a lot of public comment or a lot of discussion, we do try to transcribe as much as we can, not verbatim, but as much as we can get in there, and that takes a lot of time to.
And we're required by law to do that, so it's substantive data that the decision was predicated upon.
So, what's the best way to get our minutes so that?
Okay, a couple of things have come up with all three Commissioners over the last few weeks. Let's take a couple in order. First was that the resolutions are not prepared prior to the meeting, so you're not one-hundred percent clear on the exact wording that you're asked to vote on. Some of the, some of that issue can be addressed by having people that want issues put on the agenda, and they come from all over the county, to prepare draft resolutions of their issue, provide us that draft resolution, and they disk for the computer, so we don't have to retype that data, so that Ms. Board can modify the resolution a bit if it needs some stroking to meet all her needs. We can require that before we'll agenda an item, and I think we should. When I was, prior to returning to the county, when I was employed in Lake County, we had to present things to our clerk of the board there in resolution format. They changed a little bit, but not much, and this way, most of the work was done. I would suggest that we probably would have to have training a bit. Roxanne would have to do some training with the departments on how to structure those things, but it's not overly complicated. This way, you will be getting the resolutions in your board packet as it comes around, and you'll be able to see the exact wording on most issues. They're going to be those last-minute issues, obviously, they're going to fall out.
Will that help you out? And that will speed up those?
What about requesting this at least one week prior to the meeting?
I believe that we could do that also, recognizing that we've imposed some timeframes on ourselves before, only to find that because the business of government tends to be so complicated at times that we've had to go against our own rules, but we should try to do that. I think we should.
If there's an emergency, I can understand that, but just like the issue with Juan today, giving it to us yesterday, to vote on it today when we can't research anything, and I find this happening all the time. I've had a problem with this since I've been up here. And the minutes, and I've had a problem with that, and Roxy knows it, we've talked about it several times. Roxy tells me that, like, contracts that have to be approved by the prosecutor's office are not submitted, are not given enough time to be approved and put on the agenda, so therefore I'm thinking, well, I'm approving a contract that I haven't really seen.
Commissioner, I can resolve these problems for you very easily, but it's not going to make people very happy.
I can't help that.
I understand that. I have no problem going out there and sending stuff back, all right? You know, we've clarified a lot of issues in purchasing already. We've taken some strong stance there, and you can see the results of those issues. The packages are much better, they have much more information, and they're much clearer, and we're not getting as much tripe and misleading information. But, you're going to have some heartburn from people out there if we do this. Now, if you want to do it, I will certainly enforce the board's will. That is, I will send stuff back rather than agendaing it, but you're going to hear people, they're going to call you, they're going to go around me, they're going to call you, going to say, "I have to have this", and they're going to have nine thousand reasons why they have to have it.
Well, they should have thought in advance that they need it.
I'm completely supportive of your position, I just recognize that.
Well, I need you to be clear on this, because I know the engineer's office sends us a letter recommending a ward of a contract. That contract is not prepared until after we approve their recommendation. Now, what comes first, the chicken or the egg?
Well?
As far as I'm concerned, our action approves it, then it makes that official. But, it would be ridiculous for them to prepare all the paperwork before we actually take action.
Wait, let me interrupt here. My understanding was, all I'm looking for is that the clerk has a resolution that's prepared so that she doesn't have to make sure it's worded properly. All this other stuff is getting it, like, the open meeting discussion we just had.
Yes, but.
I'm trying to simplify it so that we can get our minutes done on a weekly basis, so that, that's all I'm trying to do here.
Okay, Ms. Vancy has a issue that's tertiary to this, which is, we prepared a resolution, and it may say to enter in a contract with X-Y-Z company. She has discussed with me on multiple occasions the fact that she's not comfortable without entering into that contract until it's been approved to as to form or possibly content by the prosecutor's office. And we routinely approve contracts with knowledge, or at least with the statement that it's going to be approved, or predicated upon that approval, and she would like to have that approval before that issue becomes for vote. Am I stating your position correct, Ms. Vancy?
I would like to, but if it's impossible, then we have that, the wording that, upon the approval of the prosecutor's office. But, as long as everything is prepared, and we can have the minutes, because as it was, there was times when our minutes were like a year behind, and I couldn't remember next month what I did last month, so how am I going to remember what I did a year ago? I would like those minutes prepared for the, and the law states that that's the way it should be. The minutes from the previous meeting should be approved at the following meeting.
Okay, does this fix this problem?
Well, the resolution helps, that's the step one.
That's step one, can we work, can this be a work on, like, a work in progress?
We have lots of those.
I know we do. That's what, Jim's so bored up there.
No, I only have to work thirty-six hours instead of twenty-four every day.
The second issue that we could do is, a lot of times, we don't understand where the funding source is for a particular item in the board business.
Let me check that out, then, since you, I didn't know this was a Cordez report.
Sorry.
That's okay.
And I will point out that, you know, the, all the Commissioners over time have discussed these issues, and most recently Commissioner Moore and had some issues with this, too, and Ms. Vancy earlier in the week. I think we should identify the funding source in the agenda and in the resolution.
John's nodding his head, so.
John, you comfortable with that, John?
Yeah, very much.
So, everything we're voting on, we'll know exactly where that money's coming from?
If approved.
If approved.
Very helpful.
Is that very difficult to do?
No, because the requirement's going to be put on the people who want to agenda an item to inform us of the funding source.
Okay, fine, then, do you need a resolution for this, or just the?
Are you got more items there you were going to tell us, so that we can just do it all in one fell swoop?
No.
Oh, that's it?
No, I.
That's it for my Commissioner's report?
This is a team effort here.
I think those two issues will bring some expedience to the agenda. At least you'll see the resolutions, and you'll know the funding source. I'm not completely sure that that's going to speed up getting the minutes turned around.
We'll find out.
And I will work with Madam Clerk on that. But, I do wish, one, to go back on this issue of how things are agended, and the preparation that goes into those agendaing items. Remembering that people are making requests of you, and we can establish guidelines, we just have to enforce those guidelines. We sometimes establish them, then we move off of them for various reasons, and people get slack out there. So, you're going to get some phone calls once we start tightening up.
Nothing wrong with efficiency.
Is there anything else, Commissioner Moore?
No, I said that, I was finished with Mr. Cordez's report, sorry.
I'd just like to remind the public and my fellow Commissioners of the meeting tomorrow, Lorraine County Community Alliance meeting at nine o'clock at the new Patsy Campana Engineering Building at Lorraine County Community College, and the program is going to be about Glide, which the Commissioners are a partner in. So, I think it'll be a very interesting meeting, and it is open to the public if anybody would like to come and join us. Thank you. Madam Clerk, old business, please.
Okay, first item, to accept and approve the improvements of Hillside Subdivision Number Eight, Amish Township, Edward J. and Wanda Lee Garkes Developers, and accept the maintenance agreement for a period of one year. The plat for Hillside Number Eight is recorded in plat volume number sixty-six, page thirty-four and thirty-five, and Lorraine County Record of Plats as follows. Stone Valley Drive with a road number of T-226 extending northerly from the north line of Hillside Number Eight, five hundred ninety-nine point twenty-seven feet or zero point one-one-three miles in length. Now, authorize the release of the maintenance bond for Hillside Number Seven, and a letter of credit for eight thousand dollars has been issued by Lorraine National Bank.
And this was on hold because the Assistant Prosecutor is going to review it.
Yes, Commissioners. I needed to clarify some language with the engineers that I had some concern with. I spoke with Wayne Miletty, and he explained why that was in there, and I have no problem with the proceeding at this point.
Thank you, I'll still move. Second?
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Approve an entry into a contract with Smart Solution Incorporated of Cleveland, Ohio, in the amount of forty-four thousand dollars for Cisco Network Hardware Maintenance Contract. Four bids were received, and this was the lowest and most responsive.
Well, this item was carried from last week. Commissioner Moore, I believe you asked for a week to study it, I hope you had.
I've had a week.
Thank you, I'll move for approval again.
Okay, I'll second.
Discussion?
Yes. I was looking at the variations of four bids presented, and I'd like to call on Karen. I can't, can't help it to think something is wrong here. Aren't there any other vendors located in Lorraine County?
There are vendors that are able to do this in Lorraine.
Would you come to the microphone, please, Karen? Thank you.
In answer to your question, Commissioner, yes, there are vendors in Lorraine County that can do this. I want to first emphasize the importance of us having coverage on the Cisco equipment. It is definitely needed, as Brian Michaels had stated last week. My recommendation would be to go with this, however, I suggest we go with a thirty-day cancellation notice. I do believe we should look into this further and consider block hours and a smart net contract.
All right, we have, currently, we have a contract for server maintenance of about a hundred thousand dollars, a PC maintenance contracts for about eighty thousand, and now we come, you come before us with this Cisco contract for forty thousand dollars. Seems like a lot of money going out for our computer services.
It is. But, we're talking three different items here. The hundred thousand that you're talking about, I believe, is the component, is it? That is coverage for, I think, the sensitive issues, or the sensitive equipment would be the auditor's equipment. Then again, I'm not that familiar with what equipment that they have. As far as the equipment the Commissioners have, it's a different story. But, from day one, I have been talking and wanting to look into block hours coverage, because it seems to me, what did you say, what, about two hundred thousand dollars we've gotten maintenance coverage for?
Well, there's a hundred thousand, eighty thousand, and now another forty, forty-four thousand. When does this stop?
Probably.
And is all of it necessary?
Karen, we don't have any coverage right now on these, do we?
Not on the Cisco equipment, and it should have been covered over two years ago.
I know, it could have, should have, would have. My understanding is that we bought this, we have no coverage, we should have had it since January, is my understanding, is when they started working on this. I don't know, I'm hearing different things. But, my understanding, we have, what, ten, I'm not literate on this, but ten switches that are callous, that are about thirty thousand apiece? We have.
Well, I don't know.
No, that's what we have, and one of those breaks down, that's thirty thousand. I asked if we had any extras, so we could plug them in, in case one does break down, and we don't. I've researched it, and for what we're getting, the forty-four thousand seems sufficient to cover this for the next, what's the contract for? Is it for a year, I believe?
That, well, I am recommending that we go with it, with that thirty-day clause, but upon your approach to me, Karen, can't we get this in block hours?
Right, right.
And I am saying to you, Commissioner, from day one, I have been saying, why don't we go with block hours?
And what you mean by block hours, Karen, is as needed, on an as-needed basis?
No, no, the way that works, Commissioners, for instance, right now, you're talking a forty thousand dollar contract with Smart Solution, who is out of the area. We have certified Cisco engineers here in the county that can give us a smart net solution, or a smart net contract on our equipment, and also sell block hours. For instance, we may want to buy a hundred block hours, and if they charge you, what, a hundred dollars, what is a hundred times a hundred? If we use a hundred hours, we'd still be ahead.
I think the issue was response time, though, was it not?
Well, with smart net, that's the point. With smart net, when a piece of equipment breaks down, which, speaking of in January, that's when I have obtained the coverage for the PICs firewall. When the equipment breaks down, smart net will replace the equipment if it cannot be repaired. You have your block hour support, so that your engineer comes in and will swap before you're diagnosed it, or whatever it may be. But, you have two different issues here. You have a smart net contract, which is the manufacturer's contract, and then you have the vendor's contract, which is the labor.
I'm a big supporter of the block hours, but unfortunately that's not what we have right now. What we're looking at right now is that we have, oh, three hundred thousand plus, maybe half a million? I don't know what the actual dollar amount is. That's not service, we have no service contract. Something breaks down because we're not approved right now, we're down a month. Is that true or is that not true? I'm seeing nods. Okay, so I'm looking at this, is this a one-year contract? Is this a two-year contract?
What did the agenda say last week? This is not the complete information that was carried forward. I don't know my agenda. What is the contract?
I don't know, I wasn't hearing last week. I was looking for it in here.
Well, why don't we, can we add our line in here to make sure the prosecutor reviews it and make sure?
The prosecutor was reviewing the contract last week according to Brian and there were some adds to it and you were looking at that. Had you reviewed the contract in total then, Jerry?
Yes.
Okay.
And what was it for, a year or what?
Year, it's optional.
Okay.
Thank you, Yvonne. One year with the option to renew.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there a escape clause?
Thirty-day escape, okay.
And your thirty-day cancellation clause.
And is there any little things on the escape clause like we found that you were talking about earlier?
Oh, Yvonne, she's already...
That was a firm...
Yes, firm, no. I feel comfortable with that, no.
Okay.
And if we want to review block hours, maybe we got a year to start organizing. If that's, I think, the best way, but it's been seven months with no coverage.
It's been...
I think, well, it's probably been longer, I've only been here seven.
But we have coverage on the PICX firewall.
We do? But we're also paying to have coverage for this.
Pardon me?
That was determined in the contract, they worked out. So when the coverage ends for the firewall, then it begins...
Does this pick it up?
Brian explained that last week that they had worked out all those details.
Okay.
I don't think that you answered my question, Karen, in regards to all the different contracts that we have. Why? Why do we have them?
I did voice my opinion on that in a memo. I think the problem was the vendors were not too clear on what they were bidding on. It just was such a difference that one didn't, I think one wasn't certified, wasn't it?
But I don't think so. Excuse me, but that's not your question, is it, Mary Jo?
My question is...
You're talking about the various different contracts we have.
Right.
I think it would be a great discussion.
We have a contract for a server maintenance for about a hundred thousand dollars, another one for eighty thousand, and another one, this one here now for forty thousand. And I'm saying, why do we have all these? Why can't we just have one? Please.
Brian Michael, you're going to come and talk to us again today, good morning.
The main reason we have three different contracts. The one we have is for our desktop PCs, which basically can be covered by, just by anybody. It used to be covered by Erie Shores. We rebid that, it's now covered by a local company. Our other contract is for our servers, which, like the Cisco equipment, requires an immediate response time. That's our compact, they cover all our compact servers. I believe we've had this contract for quite a while. We just renewed it. What it, the difference being that they guarantee us, I believe, a four-hour callback time and a twenty-four-hour response time with parts or something of that nature. Whereas the other contract we have, the one for desktop PCs, they don't offer any time when they get the product back to us. And on our servers, we need a response time that guarantees we get our equipment back up and running as fast as possible.
So aren't these all server maintenance contracts?
The one contract is for the desktop PCs, what your user uses on their desktop. The server contract is for the machines that store all your information, run your programs, run your databases. Basically, the brains behind the network. And this new contract we're looking at, the Cisco equipment, is for the network backbone, the structure of the network, the equipment that passes the information from the servers to the desktop PCs. And compact doesn't cover Cisco and Cisco won't cover compact equipment and it would be, it wouldn't be cost-effective to get a contract through compact for our desktop units that are five, six hundred dollars apiece as compared to our, you know, three thousand to thirty thousand dollar servers.
That's the eighty thousand dollar contract for the PCs, correct?
I believe yes.
Okay, so eighty thousand, I'm thinking eighty thousand dollars. If one breaks, it's like two thousand dollars if you totally have to get rid of it and get a new one.
It's actually, on the computer, yes. But that contract also covers some of our ten thousand dollar printers and some of our workstations, which are more expensive than your desktop PCs but don't require the immediate response time of a server. Like Bob Milovich in his mapping department has much more expensive PCs than the rest of, than your average desktop user would have in the county. So on those, he does need, it wouldn't be cost-effective to just go buy a new one of those.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Brian. Madam Clerk, if you call the roll, please.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancey?
Aye.
Okay, discussions on the budget for the Justice Center?
I would like to hold this item until last, till we've done everything else here, if that's all right.
Any other old business, new business?
I don't know, this might still come under the old business. July nineteenth meeting, I brought up that the redesign of the Justice Center was six hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars for the cost and that money was taken out of that ten million we had set aside for the Justice Center and I requested that that be put back into the ten million. And I don't know if we made a decision on that or not, John, do you recall?
We were going to get some information both from John and Mr. Cordez. Could we, I think that should be part of our discussion on the budget for the Justice Center.
I was thinking that, but I don't know how far off we are and I'm thinking it was under old business, so...
If I may address that. John and I do have some recommendations when we get to item three on the old business. Is that correct, Ms. Roca?
That's correct.
Good, thank you. New business?
I guess it's just the issue that we will...
Just litigation only?
Meet in executive session for the litigation issue only. I would like to move that the reading of the board correspondence be waived.
Second?
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancey?
Aye.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to briefly comment? Elizabeth Romicks?
Excuse me, this is for Mrs. Johnson who had to leave the room. She just simply wanted to bring to the public's attention the fact that the Ohio Civil Rights Commission is inviting all to attend a commission meeting on Thursday, August ninth, two thousand and one, ten-thirty a.m. at the Oberlin Public Library, sixty-five South Main Street in Oberlin. The meeting will cover, here's Mrs. Johnson, what does the Ohio Civil Rights Commission do? What happens in commission meetings? So that's Thursday, August ninth, ten-thirty, at the Oberlin Public Library, the Ohio Civil Rights Commission.
Thank you, Elizabeth and Shirley, and thank you David Ashenhurst for bringing that information to us a couple weeks ago.
I just want to add to it that I hope, I know you're not going to cancel your meeting or schedule it another time as Mr. Ashenhurst asked you to do several weeks ago. But it would be a good idea, I hope, that you will send some representatives, so that they can report back to you what the Ohio Civil Rights, how it really operates. Because I think it's going to be interesting to see. They're going to have cases there and render opinions and recommendations and so on.
It sounds exciting. It's difficult to be in two places at once, I find that a hard fact of my life. Thank you, anyone else from the public?
The board is back in session and I would turn the new administration's report out to the board we discussed in executive session. Oh, sorry. Who turned them off? I guess it doesn't work after...
Certainly, we have reconvened from executive session and I would like to turn the meeting over to Assistant Prosecutor Jerry Ennis for a synopsis of the litigation issue we discussed.
Commissioners, we've had an issue pending, I think, for better than a year now regarding a conveyance fee that was paid to the auditor's office. It involved a reorganization of a company, the Keynes Lighting Company. And sometimes companies, when they merge and they reorganize, going from one corporation to another, they go through these types of procedures. And what this company did is they did just that. They were, and they were transferring some property. They came in and they paid a conveyance fee of two hundred some thousand dollars and then a few months later, they came in and paid another duplicate, two hundred thousand dollar plus conveyance fee. There is no question that under the law, they were entitled to have an exemption, but for some reason, they didn't claim it at that time and made the double payment. And they have made a request that the second payment be returned to them. In reviewing that issue, generally, it's been a practice of the auditor's office to return erroneous payments. And certainly, in this situation, I believe that if this ever went into a court of law, a court of equity would not want to penalize somebody two hundred thousand dollars because some, somebody forgot to check the right block or make the exemption. So it's the recommendation of this office that the principal amount of that conveyance be returned to the company upon them signing a full release to the county regarding any other payments or debt owed to them.
I would so move that the two hundred thousand dollars be returned to the company.
I don't think it's just two hundred thousand dollars, Commissioner Vacy. He said two hundred thousand plus, we don't have the actual amount here.
I'm sorry, I don't have the exact amount.
I think I have, two hundred one thousand, one fifty-two point eighty.
One fifty-two point eighty. Thank you, Roxanne.
What is it, Roxanne?
Two hundred one thousand, one fifty-two point eight.
Very good, eighty cents.
Eighty cents.
Okay, Commissioner Vacy, then your motion was to return the amount?
Due to, to the company.
Contention upon the full release being signed as prepared by the prosecutor?
Correct.
Okay. I'll second that motion.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Vancey?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Okay. Now, the other outstanding item is the discussion on funding for the Justice Center and I believe, Mr. Cordez, you said you and Mr. Roca C. had some comments to make to the board, except where did John go? Did he go to lunch?
No, Batman's here, we don't know where Robin went.
I think he was right outside the door.
Oh, here is the, here's the issue.
I know he was hiding.
I thought you left him alone here, John.
No, I think he was getting his crystal boil.
Now, come on, we're supposed to roll our sleeves, you put your jacket back on everywhere here. We're supposed to swim, you know, and over this budget. Do you have some handouts?
Yeah.
Thank you, John.
Divinched audit is half the conference.
In a by-side.
Alrighty, I'll be very brief. I'll wait for it.
What's that?
Did I say he's going to be brief now?
I will be brief after this morning. John Roca C., County Budget Director. Several weeks ago, probably a month or so ago, Commissioner Vacy had brought up the issue of addressing line item accounts in the county general fund budget that had the possibility of reduction. And her purpose, as I understand it, was to possibly reduce certain line item amounts that were set aside in the budget for various purposes and the money that could be saved would be moved towards funding, additional funding towards the county Justice Center. In other words, any money we can legitimately move from areas of the budget would reduce the debt that we would need to push for for the county Justice Center. It's squid logic, there's no problem with that. The trick in these things, of course, is to, if money is to be moved from certain areas of the budget and moved to the Justice Center, I think that the object, the exercise would be that we don't penalize those areas of the budget that we move the money from, that there's adequate funding in place in present areas. Again, that would be enough to support those areas. This will make more sense, I think, if we look at this form that I've passed out. And the format and the logic of the form are just as important as the dollars. And what this form represents, in essence, is taking Commissioner Vacy's six-page candidate list, as I would call it, of areas in the budget that she feels can be reduced and of course, the money put towards the Justice Center. So what I've done, Commissioner Vacy and for the board and for Jim Cordes, is to take this six-page document without altering the meaning or logic, take that information and transpose it in very condensed form to this three-page document, if that makes sense. Let me begin by looking at this form that you have and I'll just very briefly go over the logic of it. Column one is item number, that's the particular area that Commissioner Vacy has suggested that could be reviewed for reductions or transfer of money. Second column is budget line item for review. This is the topic or area of the 2001 budget that Commissioner Vacy was looking at. And this is very important if Commissioner Vacy's suggestions for reduction are approved, there would be potential savings in 2001. The column to the right of the potential savings in 2001 is potential savings in 2002 and I'll talk about that just a little bit later. Here's the most critical part of this form. The area, the column entitled input needed from. I think as we all know, budgeting is not an event, it's a process. It's a living, ongoing, breathing document, the annual budget. So a budget should not be thought of as just a set of numbers put down on January first of the year and then watched periodically during the year. It's an ongoing process. When we talk about budgets of looking at this budget, possibly making changes, possibly not. So I think what I'm really saying there is, for everyone, is when we get into the area of discussing each of these item numbers, budget line items, is to remember that the input is needed from certain people that are closest to those areas. It's not for the budget commissioner, the budget director or the county administrator to make the decisions for the commissioners, but we have to go to the people that are closest to those areas of the budget to get their input so a decision could be made on the process. As the old saying goes, a room wasn't built in a day, either were budget changes. So what I'd like to accomplish today, of course, obviously, up to the board on how far they want to proceed, is to leave this with the board unless they want to discuss each item. And as an example, we could look at number one and say, in the 2001 budget, there was a million dollars put in by the board for additional purchases for the Justice Center, above and beyond what the county owes already or owns already. What Commissioner Vacy is saying there is, do we need the million dollars that currently exists in that area of the budget where one million dollars has been put aside? And Commissioner Vacy would say, if we don't need additional purchases for a million dollars, then let's take that million dollars from that area of the budget and put it towards the financing of the Justice Center.
John, didn't we have this discussion in October and a vote on this in December?
That's correct.
And so we're going to do this in two weeks, are we not? In two weeks, we're going to pass a resol, we're going to pass a budget, just in theory, for the statute and then for the next ninety days, we're going to be doing line item discussions on the budget for the year two thousand and two, correct? Is that correct or not?
No.
That's not correct, okay, help me now.
It's not. The budget that's coming up later this month, Commissioner Moore, is the approval of the so-called tax budget. That is not the annual appropriation. It's a very important budget, but it would not impact the items you see here.
No, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about for next year's budget. After we pass that in two weeks, we'll have roughly ninety days to pass a line item budget for each department so that we can afford, so that we can proceed, correct? I mean, I missed out last year.
Yeah, you weren't here, that's okay, it's a good question.
I didn't show up until January eighth, so I missed out on the approval. I lucked out, so... Is that my understanding that this, you're talking about taking what was already approved in December and taking money from, from Lorraine County Transit, taking money from the airport and putting it towards the Justice Center?
No, if you look in the left-hand column here, I'm not suggesting to take it from the transit.
I didn't say you.
Pardon me?
Those are all question marks, Commissioners.
You have to remember too, this was done in May. I put this together in May. And it's now August.
Yeah.
So some of these departments would be questionable, but I would think that whatever's in that left-hand column is still available?
It's a candidate to be reviewed.
And not only that, but you're talking about the transit. And today, we just authorized a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the jobs and family services to the transit. So knowing that the transit now has an additional hundred and fifty thousand dollars coming from jobs and family services, my question there would be, do they still need our hundred and fifty thousand dollars? And as far as the transit, I'm saying, review this. So that's what this is. Whether or not we're going to appropriate money for each and one of these departments and whether or not there's a potential savings in each and one of those departments, correct?
Or change the line item.
But these funds have already been appropriated. What is being suggested now is that we go back and look at the appropriation to see if we want to change it.
That's precisely right. I think Commissioner Blair said more.
We're going to, I'm going to be doing this for the next 90 days, it sounds like, with the year 2002 budget. I'm not interested in going through and taking money away from each one of these accounts. I think there is some fat there, but I think it's something that maybe as we go on for the next three to four months, that's where we look at it as the bills and as they come through. That's how I see how we're going to helpfully have some savings. I'm not interested in doing that today, going through each one of these accounts and saying, okay, we're going to take this much, or ask LCT, or to ask the bus system to say, hey, look, do you need this much money or not? I don't think, I don't think, what I've seen in the first seven months here, that people are wasting money, and I don't think they're going to spend it if it's there. I mean, my, from what I've had your discussions, people actually, if they don't use it, it comes back to the general fund. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So therefore, the money's coming back anyway. So why, why spend the time to nickel and dime on something right here when we know we're going to be doing it for the next 90 days after we pass this August 23rd?
Well, as long as I've been here, I, let me give you my input on it. As long as I've been here and you line item appropriate money to a department, you'll find that in, by October, November, and December, you are going to have this much spending compared to what you may have throughout the rest of the month. Because everybody says, spend it or lose it.
I don't think that's going to happen with, well, I think with those up here.
I've seen it over the 12 years, so that's why I'm saying, I would like to see this money changed from one line item to another, like the $1 million. Do we intend to buy any more property for the Justice Center? It's a decision we can make right now.
Well, I don't think so, because I think that's an ongoing discussion we're having.
Well, I don't think there's a right or wrong here in either reviewing it or not. It's, as I've said many times, it's a matter of, you know, priorities and a value judgment. It's just like the home budget. Some people review their home budget quarterly. Some people review it once a year. Some every month.
I can only take the pain once a month.
It's what the board feels is necessary in the priorities of looking at these items, which would total about 9.3 million, and whether the board, I guess the most succinctly way of putting it is, whether the board feels at this time, at this juncture in the year, it would be prudent to allocate or reallocate $9.3 million. That would be the maximum from other areas of the budget to help finance the Justice Center. I think that's it in a nutshell. Again, there's no right or wrong answer.
No, there isn't. I know, I agree with you. I think it's something that, this is an ongoing, it's almost like a working...
It's a process rather than an event.
Yeah, it's a working process.
That's right.
And we're watching the dollars as they come through, and as they come through, we discuss it, and whether or not it's going to be allocated to the Justice Center, or whether or not we're going to shrink that budget. That's like what I've asked, you know? I want these departments coming to us with three-year budgets so that we can start planning properly.
But my fear is, we've got unappropriated money, and I have seen it going out the door very fast, and that's scary to me, because if it's unappropriated, everybody thinks, oh, well, we're really flush, come up here and ask the commissioners. And it's, you see it all over the county. I've never seen so many different agencies or people come up here and say, commissioners, I want money for this, I want money for that, that I've seen this year. Because, and I'm hearing from the public and the people that come up here and ask us for the money, hey, you guys are flush, you can give us the money. They just think it's a free-for-all. It's like, mom's got money in the cookie jar, go get it.
My cookie jar's empty.
And we're giving it away. But I see us giving it away. I see us attacking that unappropriated money left and right. And I think there should be a halt to it, because not only that, but didn't the architects come in here yesterday and say, telephone lines were not included, no telephones were included in the Justice Center? And the furnishings for this Justice Center are probably going to be half, or half is going, is included in there, and it's going to double from what we will actually need. But we're not prepared, because we don't have this money set aside. It's like we're really stingy to set money aside for this Justice Center, and it's really bothering me. Because I, I don't want us to spend any more, and I think you would agree with this, we don't want to borrow more than half of what that Justice Center is going to cost us. I don't want to put it on the next generation to come, and with all the interest. I want to get this money set aside now, settle it up once and for all. If we're not going to buy any more property, in my opinion, we've got all the property we need for the Justice Center. So why let the $1 million sit there? Somebody else knows about, there's a $1 million sitting there. Go ask the commissioners, because I got a playground I want to put up.
No, but there's a little bit different. The monies that we've been giving for the playgrounds are solid waste monies. These are general fund monies.
Well, I'm talking about other money that came out of unappropriated general fund money. I'm just using that for...
When do we discuss?
But this million is appropriated, and you're talking about unappropriated money. So there's three different categories here.
Well, I'm saying this is appropriated for that, for the Justice Center, to purchase more land for the Justice Center. Since we don't need more land for the Justice Center, let's put it towards the Justice Center.
Well, but you've already made a decision for the whole board, and I don't share your opinion.
No, I'm just saying that. I, this is my opinion. This is the document that I put.
Well, I appreciate that, but I guess I do not agree with you that there's no more property to be purchased. That's what I'm trying to say. So in my opinion, I would not be willing to take this $1 million right now and put it there. And I do think that, as we talked before, that this budgetary process and the appropriation process is an ongoing thing. We're moving into the second cycle this year. We'll have some more definitive information about how much more we may or may not get towards the end of the year, and...
We might have to use the unappropriated for that?
Well, and, and let's just talk about, Mary Jo, last week, you, you put forth the idea of taking $3 million of that unappropriated money. You wanted to look about new voting machines, so, you know...
Well, I'm not talking about unappropriated money in here.
I know, but I am.
If I may interject, that issue of the unappropriates is addressed in item 17, if we want to digress to that one point.
No, I don't think we wanted to... The point I was making is, there's a lot of, a lot of documentation here to be studied, and there are some decisions that need to be made, and I think as we move down the road, some of these decisions will fall into place for us.
I think they'll come as we, as the board, as the money comes through.
It's how the board chooses. That's right. Again, I have to emphasize, there's no right or wrong answer. It's the priorities of the board. It's how they view the immediate future, the balance of the year.
And I think the directors and everybody who's receiving funds realize today that we are looking at every dollar. And I don't think that, I think they realize that just because it's in their budget that they're going to get the money. Is that a valid statement or not? I mean, okay, that's my opinion.
I don't know if they realize that.
Okay. No, but I appreciate, I mean, that's a...
As long as I'm on record that I feel that there's $9 million that can be put towards the Justice Center.
Okay, and I am...
If anything happens in the future, I want to be noted that I felt that there was $9 million that could be put aside for that Justice Center.
And I'll be in record that I do not wish to take away any money from any other accounts that need the money, which is economic development and Lorraine County Transit. So if we're going to do that, then we can do that all day.
Yeah, but you're not certain.
But it's already, you voted on it in December. It's passed, there's nothing, we can reallocate, we can reappropriate, but I don't wish to do that. I wish to do that in the appropriations when they come through. And that's how I've been doing it, looking at it and questioning each payment to make sure that it's needed and not fat. That's how I, that's how I see managing the county's taxes. That's my own personal opinion, so.
And as a compilation of both of those, when we come to the end of the year, there will be monies left in some of these funds that have been appropriated that have not been spent, and that money will become available to reappropriate to whatever item we choose.
And hopefully.
Unless some event would come along to change that, but under the normal course of things, that money would continue on in these accounts. That's correct, Commissioner.
So, we're going to have an opportunity to reappropriate monies. You're going to look at the Justice Center. We're working on that, what it's going to cost us, and we've set aside how much this year for it?
On the Justice Center, Commissioner?
Mm-hmm.
If I could just go to item 17, I could address that very quickly. We had $22 million, that's been the number, and there was $600,000 roughly taken out to pay the architects for the rest schematic drawings, the schematic drawings that were changed. And item 17, Mr. Cortez and I talked about these issues, and one of the items the board may look at is taking approximately $2.1 million of unappropriated money, if the board so chooses, may not, may take something between $0 and $2.1 million. And if that would be done, the total that would be set aside for the Justice Center would not be $22 million, but would be $23.5 million. That's up to the commissioners. That's totally a value judgment and priorities.
That would bring us almost up to half.
It would bring a little more than half of what's planned.
What is appropriated now, to date?
To date, it's $21.4 million. We had $22, but we took the $600,000 out, I believe it was last week, for the architects.
But it wouldn't be half, John, if we still need additional money for the telephones and whatever else is coming up, then we wouldn't be at the half mark.
Well, maybe, maybe I need to address that. We are going to have, and I'll say this very succinctly, we are going to have additional costs with the Justice Center.
That's right.
So we're in the process. I'm gaining a lot of insight into what's in that budget, what's not in that budget, and there are a number of things that are going to have to be paid for outside that budget. Specifically, as I've shared individually with each commissioner, I'm gravely concerned that we're very, very short in furnishing allowances for the building. There is no allowances for, for additional technology outside the courtrooms, so there's going to maybe have some cable, a lot of cabling put in for data and telephone and so forth, and that's going to be, the cost is going to be sizable. So those issues have to be dealt with. I don't have anything very specific on them right now, but I've made you aware that you're going to have to deal with those costs during all...
And there's going to be additional maintenance agreements that will, they're very expensive. I'd at least like to see us put that $628,000 back in there.
I just think, just to add to what Mr. Cortes is saying, after our meeting with Jim and I and the architects and the construction manager yesterday, I guess I wouldn't use so much the term "the budget" as short as it appears. It appears that the projections that were put forth when these drawings were done, when the initial construction outlook was given, did not include total telephone costs, which now will have to be picked up in a budget subsequently. And the telephones were the one item, and the other item, Jim, was...
Furnishings.
The furnishing and fixtures, that's right.
And my, my, my position of not being comfortable with that comes from the fact that nobody can tell me with, with any definitively where, where these numbers even originated from. Where did you come with this number? What was it meant to pay for? Nobody seems to know. And we, you know, I'm, I don't want to come back to this board at some future date and tell you that we're going to, that we're going to have some problems, but, so you're being told now, because we're early on. But those, those issues are going to have to be addressed by the board. I'm just letting, I'm not advocating anything in this process, I'm just putting it out there now so that you're aware. I do, to the board, do support returning, at a minimum, the monies that we took out of the $10 million to bring that account back, and if you have additional unappropriated monies that you can set aside, that may be an option at this point, rather than going through and dissecting the budget, but it's going to be needed some way or another.
Okay, but these are not unappropriated monies that we're talking about on this sheet you've given us.
The $2.1 million in line number 17 is unappropriate.
Is the only unappropriate...
It's unappropriate money.
Discretionary money, Commissioner.
I don't understand how that got there. If it's a potential savings, the money has already been appropriated, then it's not unappropriated.
Correct.
This is, this is not, this doesn't depict what it should. That's a recommendation to move $2.1 million of unappropriated money to appropriated money.
And it shouldn't appear as potential savings in 2001. It's confusing. It doesn't, I thought we were looking at issues of money that had already been appropriated, and we were looking about transferring those appropriations from one account to another.
Yeah, these are not savings. These are just moving money back and forth, correct? From one account to another, correct?
Well, when I did this in May, it was, there was $6 million unencumbered, and I believe now we have about $4 million that's unencumbered.
Well, I used Commissioners, I didn't want to alter her original six-page document. Commissioner Vasie had suggested these would be savings towards the Justice Center and not having to borrow beyond what we had originally anticipated. In other words, it would be, quote, "savings" to the county by not having to borrow. Let me clarify.
Yeah, let's clarify this, because...
I didn't want to alter that concept, so it's not perhaps the traditional savings, but it does impact our borrowing. If these would be accepted to some degree, it would reduce our borrowing, and it would be, of course, savings.
But we're going to decide what we're going to borrow when? When are we going to decide what we're going to borrow?
Let me speak to that, John. That issue probably will not be dealt with now with the revised time schedule we have until sometime, I would say, late in the winter, into the new year. So that's when we'll start talking about what our GO, where our GO is, and what our borrowing capacity is going to be, and how much of that capacity we want to expend into the Justice Center project.
And then we will have more information on what the cost of the telephones and the furnishings is going to be, even though it was not included in the original. So we'll have more definitive figures.
I'm going to attempt to nail those costs down, yes.
So we'll know exactly, we know what we have put forward to date, we'll know what the span is, what might additionally be needed, and we'll have the benefit of finishing this year, and we'll know about any other unappropriated monies that we will have at the end of the year.
That's factual.
Right, that's correct.
And so we just always got to keep an eye on the fact that at least $628,000 of unappropriate funds should probably move over eventually.
I would be an advocate of that.
So if you just, we keep an eye on that, and what's, and the $2.1 again?
Well, the $2.1 includes the $600,000.
So you're looking at maybe taking 1.5 extra out of the unencumbered account, put it in there?
I, I, I think that would be, it could be advisable, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think it brings us up to the point, in fact it does, that if the board would approve that $2.1, then our appropriations, or money in the bank, so to speak, as we said in the past, towards the Justice Center would be $23.5 million, which would be over half the cost of the Justice Center, would be available internally through internal financing.
Well, I would move to put the... I'm making a motion to put the $2.1 aside for the Justice Center to transfer.
What would that leave us in unappropriated monies if, in fact, we took that $2.1 million and taking it, excuse me?
About $2.4 million.
$2.3, $2.4, that's exactly...
Correct, because we've moved to the $1.4 for the EMA 911 project.
Right. So subtracting the $2.1 from the $4.4, we're leaving about $2.3 million in discretionary money.
$2.3.
I came up 1.2. Say that again? We're down to one. I thought we're down to 1.6.
As Jim was saying, we're now at $4.4 million unappropriated, since we appropriated for the EMA 911 project. So as we said today, we have $4.4 in unappropriated or discretionary monies. If $2.1 were approved and appropriated out of the $4.4, that would leave $2.3 still available as discretionary money.
Now, recognizing, simply because that money is put aside for the Justice Center, if you want to borrow at a, at a higher level, of course, that money is necessary someplace else, it could be moved at some future date. That's correct, Mr. Roca Cee?
That's correct. Appropriations can always be either transferred or reduced or increased, that's right.
That's what we're just talking about.
Well, not only that, but on December 31st, even though we've set aside this amount of money, it all goes back to zero, and in January 1st, we're going to have to reappropriate
half the cost of the Justice Center, would be available internally through internal financing.
Well, I would move to, I'm making a motion to put the 2.1 aside for the Justice Center to transfer.
What would that leave us in unappropriated monies? If in fact we took that 2.1 million and taking it, excuse me?
It would be about 2.4 million.
2.3, 2.4, that's exactly...
Correct, because we've moved to the 1.6 for the EMA 911 project.
Right. So, subtracting the 2.1 from the 4.4, we're leaving about 2.3 million in discretionary money.
2.3.
I came with 1.2. Say that again? We're down to 1, I thought we're down to 3.6.
As Jim was saying, we're down to 4.4 million unappropriated, since we appropriated for the EMA 911 project, so as we said today, we have 4.4 in unappropriated discretionary monies. If 2.1 were approved and appropriated out of the 4.4, that would leave 2.3 still available discretionary money.
Now, recognizing simply because that money is put aside for the Justice Center, if you want to borrow at a higher level, of course, that money is necessary someplace else, it could be moved at some future date. That's correct, Mr. Ocasie?
That's correct. Appropriations can always be either transferred or reduced or increased, that's right.
That's what we're just talking about.
Well, not only that, but on December 31st, even though we've set aside this amount of money, it all goes back to zero, and in January 1, we're going to have to reappropriate this money anyway.
Correct.
And any additions that we might make to it.
I thought it was, I thought that discussion was in October.
The discussion is in October, but the final resolution, which legitimitizes the entire budget, the legislation is usually passed either the second or the last meeting in December, that form of...
But my point was, at a point in time, all appropriations end for that fiscal year, and then months be...
By state law, at midnight, all appropriations die, so to speak, and they need to be re-appropriated. Again, the board has the option on January 1 to reappropriate the same amounts or something different.
Or more.
Or more or less, that's exactly right.
I'd like more.
I do, too. I like the, I think the board has done fabulously in putting aside 22 million.
Yeah, no, that's a great job.
I commend it on that.
I agree.
If you could put aside half the cost of the bricks and mortar, that's a big step.
I'll second Commissioner Vacy's motion to appropriate 2.1 million of the unappropriated monies towards the Justice Center, which would bring the appropriations at this point in time then to 23.5 million. It will still leave us, according to you, 2.2 million of unappropriated monies from now until the end of the year.
2.3.
Well, if you said we have 4.4 and we're taking 2.1 away, that leaves 2.2. I know you said 2.3 or 2.4, but I, excuse me.
It is 3.
Yes, it is. Point of error, Commissioner, right?
They won't couple over 100,000. I guess that's...
We'll just take it out of John's paycheck.
Yeah. Two weeks for that, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you for that.
Okay, so then, do you understand what I, what we're suggesting here?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, so do you have...
So, right now, we have 21.4 to date, because they spent, how much have they spent?
628.
No, more than that.
Well, that's what they're talking about.
I thought I have appropriated...
It was just over 600,000 for the drawings of the redesigned building.
But we're also, but we spent a lot more already. I mean, I voted...
Oh, you mean on the, yeah.
On the Justice Center.
If you turn your attention, Commissioner already spent, ahead of that designation, 7.0 million, so we've encumbered about 7 million for the so-called soft cost.
Right, but that's our, has that gone under the 22 million?
That's right. In other words, that's paid for.
Right, so we're not...
We don't have to pay for it again, obviously.
So, we're at 30.5 million.
No, 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 I don't think we're at 30. I thought you just said we just spent it out of the 22. Are you saying...
No, no, I, no. No, the 7 million was encumbered, I believe, last year, and that money has been set aside to pay the architects, and so the money has been set aside, it's money in the bank.
No, I thought...
I think Commissioner Vacy, just after what she's saying, is saying that last week or the meeting before, we spent 600,000, which was not included in the 7, which needs to be reserved.
John, you're not answering it. Would you redirect your question again, Commissioner?
He asked if the 7 million soft cost is part of the 23.5 million, or if it's 23.5 plus 7, which would equal 30.5 million.
The 7 million is included, would be now included as part of the 21.4 million.
I know, I'll make it simple. About a couple of months ago, I didn't vote for a 2.5 or 2.65 million appropriation to the architects, if you remember that, a couple of months ago?
How did you call that?
Okay, did that come out of this, 23.5? Or did it come out of 7 million that you already put aside earlier?
It came out of the reserve. We have 10 million in the general fund, the 600,000 we had came out of that.
Okay, wait, let me back up again. You have 10 million...
Set aside as in the general fund.
As for the Justice Center. You took 2 million bucks already out, I'm going to round numbers now, okay? Now you're down to, now you're down to 8 million.
I lost you there, Commissioner.
Okay, wait a minute.
Out of the 10 million, to my knowledge, we took 600,000 out, just over 600,000.
Okay, where'd the 2.5 million that we paid the architects come from?
That would have come out of, if it was for the original cost of the building, it would have come out of the 7 million.
Which is part of the 21.4 million. So, the total that we've appropriated is the 21.4 million. All these costs have come out of there.
But we don't have that 21.4 in the bank. How much do we have? How much do we have left? We've already spent 7 million, you're telling me?
We had 22 million until last week, when 600,000, here's the best way, I think, to look at it.
No, no, timeout, that's great. Okay, that's true, because there's 600,000, 628,000 that had to be paid for appropriation or for the...
Redesign.
The redesign, okay? But earlier in the year, we approved 2.65 million for the architects. That was appropriated. Where'd that money come from?
It came out of the 22 million that we had set aside.
Okay, so we don't have 22 million in cash set aside. We've spent, how much now?
If 2.5 was paid and now 600,000, that would be 3.1 million that we paid.
That's just those two that I'm bringing up. Is there any more out of that 21 to 22?
No.
Because the illusion, well, the illusion here is making it sound like we're going to, we've already got the cash for half the building, which we don't, we already spent it.
Well, some...
We've spent probably 7 million, is that what you're telling me?
Well, it would be an illusion, Commissioner.
I don't mean to say illusion either. Maybe I should say, the thought pattern was, hey, we got half the cash set aside to build something, but we don't. We've already spent 23.
Yeah, but if we pay, if we pay them, I think I see where John's going, you're going, if we pay them, that comes off the 45 million, so it's just a...
Yeah.
If we paid them 2.5, now that we only need 42.5 for the building.